Call to, uh, to, call to, uh, order the regular scheduled board meeting of the mayor and board of Alden, Calhoun City, Mississippi, um, Tuesday at six thirty P M, November fourth, twenty twenty five. Um, may I have you already been here before? And I would ask for you not to make any loud gestures or, um, disrupt the proceedings. You cannot speak because you're not on the agenda today, but we welcome you to this board meeting as we have every board meeting that you decided to come to. And this is open for anybody at any time, so we thank you for coming and being a part of this proceeding. Uh, as I said before, off camera, please leave your phones silenced. You can record at your, at your own pleasure. Just try to keep the phones from ringing out loud or somebody called and we're hearing it. Thank you. Uh, at this time, we're called to order, um, the invocation of pleasure of allegiance by Alden himself.
Dear heavenly father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Uh, we have a lot of decisions to make tonight. I hope you give us the courage and the strength to make the right decisions. Dear lord, uh, twenty minutes ago, I was at the house, or twenty-five minutes ago, and W T B A's headline was on the news and it said, Calhoun City craziness. And, uh, I'm not sure how we got to this point, but it's a very supportive town. And I pray that you, uh, help us and give us the, give us your blessing tonight, uh, in your, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two of adoption of the agenda before you. I need someone to salute, make, uh, uh, and this is the time if you had something that you needed to put on there that you could add. Uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda recording.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I discussed, I kind of discussed with you through a text about, uh, Nellie Pratt's pay and getting her paid since she has resigned. I think, from what I understand, we owe her two weeks' pay and her comp time or vacation time.
And that's our order because we handle all this stuff in executive session, sir. And we do not do anything go out personally, I said.
Okay, so I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to add that to the agenda. Discussion on Nellie Pratt's, Nellie Pratt's pay.
Make a motion if somebody can second it. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to discuss Nellie Pratt's pay and what we owe on the town.
And second.
Second.
The motion probably second, then we'll be going into executive session for that because, uh, I was trying not to go into executive session. We handle that in the office.
We can have, uh, we handle it at the end of the.
I said, we normally handle that in the office. Nobody is withholding anybody's pay. That's why we got to this craziness because every time, like I said, you come in with some mess.
Why should not be paid?
Because, why should not be paid? Because you, you decided that you was gonna stop us from paying everybody until you decided that they would get paid.
Okay.
That's why. And we gonna stop the mess tonight about accusing the mayor of everything. Because it's, wait, you brought this up.
Okay.
You brought it up, did you not?
I brought it, put it on the.
You brought it up. You had every answer time. They had it already on their agenda.
So are we discussing this now?
Well, we, I'm, I'm discussing this with you right now.
Okay, I thought we couldn't do that.
Because you bring the mess into the boardroom every time and then you got people backing you up in that mess. That's why we where we are. You just prayed and said that, but you the reason why we where we are.
You think so?
I do, I know.
You think?
I do know.
You think some of your Facebook posts are.
I do know, I do know you are the reason why.
It's gonna be down to executive session.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
Well, I'm the, I'm the chair and I make that decision when I stop talking.
Okay.
It is gonna be handling executive session. I wish people would not say anything unless they get my attention and ask me, can they say something? That's the problem in this boardroom. I've asked you all to stay professional and you will not. Need a motion. Now I need a, a vote on the, uh, going into, uh, on putting that where you said you wanted it. I need a motion. Need a second. All in favor of, all in favor of.
Aye.
Okay, so three, two, okay, three, four, and two against. And I'm against it, so I'll be big toe in there. See, we brought you early in the morning. Well, we ready to go into business. Adoption of the agenda before you.
How move? Matter that we adopted agenda before?
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Proposes you to sign the name motion carried unanimously, no negative votes. Did anybody vote negative? I'm gonna need to hear from you if you voting. Did everybody vote, uh, did anybody vote negative? All in favor of, did it carry unanimously? I need a show of hand from now on, man. I need whoever vote by show of hands. If the motion carry unanimously. Motion carry, so moved and so ordered. Item number three. Approval of minutes of regular scheduled board meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty five, special call board meeting, October eighteenth, twenty twenty five, special call meeting, October twenty twenty five, and special call meeting, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty five, addendum, addendum one through four. I give you a few minutes to look at it. I need a few minutes to look at it. Can you do it? Already read it? Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
The motion probably second, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Discussion.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. All right, so, on the, so we are approving all the minutes for those meetings, correct? And there's a couple of adjustments that we need to make, or just a, so we'll technically there, it's not much. On the, October the sixth meeting.
Yes, sir.
On the add-on number ten.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, for certain company, it is amount of four hundred and six thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars to be paid within four days of receiving money in the bank.
Yes.
And a fine motion by Harold Second, Alden Harper, from the vote of all present to board, approved payment of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four. So that was the.
The board approved payment of less than what we had asked.
Yeah, it's just.
We need to show being.
It's just clerical. I mean, we just need to change the number.
And I, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that. That's what we should be doing is, is looking behind each other. So we'll make that adjustment in the minutes.
Okay, and on, uh, add-on number twelve, right below that, we had a discussion of an action on maybe love to purchase some property, um, and we're gonna, like, we're gonna like to make a payment or make a price on it later date, but shouldn't advertise before we sell it to one individual before price.
Uh, attorney was in here, he'll have to direct to him.
We, we're gonna do that. We had to look and make sure we own it first. I think actually advertise, I think is correct.
Advertise.
So, but you realize that the price you get is not gonna be a great price because it's in the flood zone. I want everybody to understand that it's in the flood zone. Might not get one, do you?
Yeah, okay.
Depends on, well, and it depends on how much it is, like attorney said. If it's less than five thousand dollars, then, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to get a bid. But if it's more, then we do. So we have to look at what we asking for.
And back in a real quick on the October sixth meeting, on, uh, right below add-on number one. We, uh, I just wondered if we did this twice, but on October sixth, it was discussion action on the addatory to the authorized signature for the bank transaction from the city.
Yes, sir.
And it said, it was due the second of August malicious and confirmed in vote of all present board, Deputy Clerk Troy Herbert, to add it to the bank account for authorization of signature. And I think we did that again at a later meeting.
We did, and we had to, we did that because we had to, because we had to take people off. Um, I hope you remember that portion where we had to take several people off that we didn't even know was still on the bank accounts. So the bank requires us to operate a certain way, and when those minutes come in, if they're not just right, then we held up until another board meeting. So that's what, that's what happened, the reason why she was on there twice. So those minutes are covered.
Okay.
Okay, we good?
I think we're good.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Proposes you to sign the name? Motion carries unanimously, no negative votes. So moved and so ordered. On, um, let's scroll down, be the time to scroll past all these minutes. Pass, addendum forward, we'll be. Addendum five, public works, thirty minutes. That's why public works report, Mr. Dan.
Public works, monthly report for October, administrative, Daniel being with the mayor to discuss agenda, hiring two, uh, new employees, acquiring bids on new tractors, met with the zoning committee about, uh, tobacco, uh, shop possibly coming into the city, uh, met with the, uh, baseball co- coach to discuss moving, uh, defense and prep work needed to complete a sports play, uh, full board meeting, and, uh, city, uh, cleaning up and beautification, met with Ms. Barbara Griston and beautification committee to discuss Christmas, uh, decorations for the square, picked up limbs and debris throughout the city, grass mowed throughout the cities, square, city hall, and, uh, the baseball field, cleaned up and organized the shed, painted new flower boxes to be placed on the square, water and sewer, check on the body steel well, and the industrial park, uh, well, chlorine levels and changed bottles, performed numerous dat- data law usage check, customers complained about Beetle, Beetle Mount, cover ditch work completed on Beetle Street, ditch dug at Alden plant to stop water from coming inside the plant, fire hydrant turned on throughout the city due to brown water on Kenan Road, uh, check pumping stations, red meters for customers, cut off meters for non-payment, fixed members of minor water leak, performed several eight-one-one low tape, blew out several sewer lines, ditch water leak at the football field, pressure regulator leak at the Votek part order and waiting on it to come in. Uh, started, uh, uh, aerating the lagoon to cut down over, uh, located sewer and water line for the, uh, Dr. Dobbs, uh, the dentist's office for future construction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
Y'all have any questions for Mr. Dan?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, chief, you have a pulpit, please?
May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, voluntary city hall investigation, intended board, monthly board meeting, intending of the homecoming game, intended to tear date festivities, completing approval of all time sheets, through all boards, intended city court, Chevy town repair, twenty eighteen, retired Dodge charges in the shop, attendance for all special colonies, attended all home football games, intended public safety meeting at Calhoun County Sheriff Department.
Okay, y'all have any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, and we have Ms. Sheer, um, she was accidentally left off, uh, Ms. Sheer, but you know, you, you speak up here, sorry about that.
Thank you, mayor.
We, uh, we were, Ms. Tori didn't know, so we changed, changed city positions since she gave her things.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Uh, I made a sign these at recent, uh, recently at the Little Bernie Manufacturing site that we have out here, and they're very easy steel. A lot of their Christmas season orders have already been produced and shipped, and hopefully after the first of the year they'll be back with lots more orders out there. Also, Alden is doing well, still, still working on that part-time, and thank you, Mr. Campbell, for working on that water situation down there. The catness situation, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, there's not any updates on that. I'm still trying to get something moving on that. Uh, and the last thing I have, the Mississippi Emergency Management Association has, uh, grants available for residential storm shelters. It's a seventy-five percent, uh, grant, and, uh, they're taking applications throughout the month of November, and it's not on a first home, first served basis this year. So you would normally, you would apply the end of November after all the applications are received. They're gonna literally draw, uh, uh, to see who gets funded for that project. So, uh, residents are encouraged to apply today if you're interested, but do not incur any debt until you actually are notified that you're approved for that grant dollars out there. And that's all I have. And if someone has questions, sir.
Don, no questions. Only thing I would say, you know, when I had talked about trying to, to look at purchasing the catness, uh, building, and, um, you know, I, I don't know. The building had bad disrepair and it's another hassle in the city. Um, I think that, I know we got some escrow money, but I, I think we need to move forward. We're trying to talk to them about seeing what they would take for that building, where we can market it and get other money from M B A, all the things that we can get it up on the house, our wings. And so I did, we had talked about this a month before election, and I still wanna go in that direction pending board approval, that we go in that direction of this talking tonight where they can get, and we'll put it on the agenda the next time and we'll do something for them. We try to move forward. Meanwhile, if you don't mind, if I need to go with you, we do need to pay a visit over there.
Okay, mayor, I will continue to reach out to them and try to get a debt to set up.
Okay, all right. Now, can I, I still have the, uh, the, um, what is it? Um, I still have their, their itemized list of what that building is worth.
Right.
And I have that appraisal by discor. Okay, thank you, yes, ma'am.
Discussion and action on item number six is going to be, um, uh, we didn't set the pay home, hired these employees fifteen dollars per hour for Mr. Trivikas coffee. I need a motion.
I make a motion?
Need a second? Can y'all do a, just do a show of hands that we don't have to come back. Just, um, when you, when you do it, just, you know, okay. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor of show of hands? Say aye.
Discussion.
Yes, sir, discussion.
Um, so what are we paying him right now?
We not paying him anything because he left, got paid yet. Uh, his pay wasn't sick when we hired him.
Okay, so I've got a question on that. We, uh, where we usually hire people at? At, um, what, for what he's doing? What is his job title? What is his job responsibility?
He's just a common worker, fifteen dollars, fourteen, fifteen dollars. We can't get anybody for fourteen, so we've been bringing them in at fifteen.
So it's my understanding that, you know, we, we may have made a mistake last board meeting when we, when we gave Ms. Barnard a raise.
We didn't make no mistake.
What, what was she getting paid before?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars. So that's a fifty percent raise is what we gave her.
Yeah.
And the employee manual says, the personnel management guidelines for the city states that no proposed raises shall be implemented to increase salaries or pay for any employee unless the performance appraisals are on file in each employee's record file specific to each individual.
Okay, uh, where's the quote from? Did that came out of personnel manual?
Personnel management guidelines, guidance.
Okay, it says what now?
Let me read it again.
Yes, sir. Well, I can go get mine.
It says, let me start from the top. Performance evaluations or appraisals for employees are to be completed by the appropriate department head, including the mayor, and his or evaluations of all heads of department.
Did it say shall?
The, no, it didn't say shall.
Okay, then it don't have to have.
Well, it does. These performance evaluations shall be done twice a year in five and a half month intervals. No proposed raises shall be implemented to increase salaries or pay for any employees unless all performance appraisals are on file in each employee's record file specific to each individual.
When, whenever we've been doing performance appraisals?
I know, we're supposed to be.
So, and, and just, did it say shall?
It said, these performance evaluations shall be done twice a, twice in five and a half.
Did it say shall? Okay. So it's what you're requiring, you know, do, you tell that employee not to come to work tomorrow. If it, if it worked, we run it into stuff like that.
It's undermined, from, looking at the agenda, you want to give every employee that's part-time a fifteen dollar?
These employees are not part-time.
Okay, so which ones later on down the road do you want to pay fifteen dollars?
Well, if we gonna pay one fifteen dollars an hour when they doing work in the office, we gonna have to pay the other one. If you wanna, let's get to that when we get to it, when we get down to this hour. See, you injected a lot in it, and we gonna get to that point. Listen, we gonna get to that point in the agenda though, you out of context. What is deal was before us. We don't never do that, we don't jump forward. That's all I'm trying to keep the cool of them, not, you know, just trying to keep us where we can get out of here at a good time. Like, like, everybody in here wants to.
So fifteen dollars an hour? How many, anybody else? Is that high, low?
That's what we been paying.
So there's not anyone making the low that?
Not that I know of.
So let me ask this, who, who are we replacing Trivikas coffee with? I mean, who, who?
Who can you replace?
I can't say we replaced him. We had it open. In those positions, we start them off with what we asked, what we negotiated with them and interviewed with. That's what we bring forward to the board. When we, when we looking at the application and we see what they bringing, if they can operate equipment and all that, uh, or if they can, if they are nervous and they can't do anything, then we offer them something lower. But when they come in with a skill set, then we try to start them off with something that's gonna keep them here.
I understand, skill set, and that's important, and their experience is important, but.
It's part of the skill set.
But you want to take everybody fifteen dollars, and everybody's different as far as their skill set and their experience.
What we interviewed them for. You weren't in the interview, um, you weren't in there. So if we, if, if I'm asking for fifteen dollars, then obviously they worth fifteen dollars. We didn't have anybody. We've been shorthanded for a long time. We finally got municipal works up to par. We trying to buy equipment. We, uh, we trying to make sure that we can do. We, in fact, I can tell you something. You really don't know what it entails in order for us to stay on top of, of all of the agencies that, that govern us, and it takes a lot. I can tell you, we were inspected, not two weeks ago, sewage was gone in disrepair for years of neglect, and then we get caught with our hands in the cookie jar, and we got to crop, trap, scramble to keep everything going for the citizens here. So you rather don't, you're not taking in consideration what we paid to run the town when you say that.
Oh, I know.
How can you?
On item number eight, for Ms. Erica Shaw, we, for water clerk, we were paying Mike Armstrong fifteen thirty-five an hour. You're proposing that we pay her nineteen. Does she have experience, experience in a city clerk?
Yes.
Or city water clerk position?
She's retired, and, and I see, and this is, this is wrong to come in here and talk about an employee out in the opening like that.
There's nothing on us with that.
No, but we don't do that. We don't do that. Yeah, I keep telling you, you're out of kilter with this. I wish that we could re- reach some kind of understanding and you would come in and try to work with us instead of keep looking for something.
I'm trying to work with you, but we, we just did budget two months ago, and we didn't budget for any of this.
Uh, we did, 'cause I, I had a cushion.
We gave her a part of your.
No, I had a cushion in there. See, you, you didn't listen when we were in there. I had a cushion built to you, to where we know that we not gonna keep the same employee, and we look for, for, for us to have to hire new people. And so we don't just set a budget down to where it actually is. That's not how budgets work. You have to have some lead weight in there, and the budget does have it in there. It's not just cut and dry. And we could have talked about this in, today.
Wait, okay, you just listed everybody getting a raise and we just gave raises to everyone?
No, I didn't. These are new people. These are good.
But you got other people in here that we already decided.
We right here where we are in, on the agenda. We asking for a motion and a second for Mr. Trivikas to get that, and so we need to vote on it. When you get ready, I'm willing to listen to you. Go ahead.
Go ahead with the motion.
So I will, the motion is second.
Okay.
We finish with discussion. Okay, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Proposes, uh, that was it? Okay, proposes using the sign and name.
I'll say name.
Name.
So they'll go home tomorrow, just like y'all sent those.
Maybe we should go into executive session.
Just like y'all sent those employees home last week and I got blamed for shutting Just like y'all sent those employees home last week, and I got blamed for shutting down city hall.
Now, you remember October sixth, we put her on the bank card, we made a motion, so they should, should have been paid.
No, they shouldn't have been paid, because she could not get on the bank card.
That's all you needed was minutes.
No, we did not.
You had knocked over the six.
No, we did not. No, it wasn't, no, we did not. Ask the banker, go, go to the bank and ask him if they accept that.
They want the minutes.
No, no, no.
The bank, the.
All of our folks had to be taken off before that could happen.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, uh, for just a little bit, and talk about the pay of these employees.
I'll accept that as the motion. We made a motion to, uh, declare the room, um, to go into executive session. So that was your motion. I don't need a second. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Show of hands. Okay, um, so, um, now we need a motion to go into executive session. Chief will just go everybody down to the, uh, to the courtroom, not in the hallway, all the way down in the courtroom.